Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
Mr. Mayor, under new business, we would ask that item number five be added to the agenda, which is a consideration of resolution 2023-02. That relates to sale of the industrial parkland to the Little Art Drainage.
Okay, any questions of that, council? Next, I'll open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council, now's the time to do that. There's nobody in the audience, it appears, that wants to speak to the council tonight, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the public forum and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, considering we had a modification to the consent agenda and trusting that everyone has seen it and approved, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with its new modification.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Consent agenda stands as passed. We'll move on to unfinished business and the first item, or the only item, is a public hearing for distressed property at 126 East Third. I will open that public forum up now, public hearing up now, and ask for Ethan for an update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last public hearing, we have had contact, or I guess the most noticeable update is we have had contact with Mr. Reckus, the owner of the property. He has engaged an engineer. It's one the city's actually used before. Brent England, out of the Hutchinson area. Did, or Ozzy did send me the proof that he's engaged. The stipulation there is that Brent's schedule doesn't allow him to get to the property until the end of May, early June. Per what the council asked staff to do, we did solicit rough quotes on demolition. The price range right now is running roughly between 20,000 to 60,000, depending on scope of work. One of the big unanswered questions obviously has to do with any mold or asbestos that might be on site, and so until the city or someone can answer that definitively, everyone was hesitant to give us, you know, firm, firm price, and that's understandable. Speaking with Brad, obviously, we just, we don't have access to the property to allow for that inspection to take place, so we obviously can ask Mr. Reckus. I think he's going to ask the city and did indicate, you know, that he's willing to have the structural engineer come out if we're willing to give him that time until the engineer can get out at the end of May. If we're gonna push to get access to it before, I will let Brad answer how, how best and how soon we could reasonably expect that, but I assume we would need legal action of some sort to get access to the property for that asbestos inspection.
Mold or asbestos?
Both.
Both, okay.
But mostly asbestos is the bigger.
I see, okay.
Of the two. So, that's kind of where we're at. I mean, Ozzy did indicate as well that he's continuing or has worked with the real estate, you know, company that was doing the auction and that he's still in, in talks with people interested in buying the property. They just haven't come to an agreement yet on sale, but I have seen definitive proof and I can forward that email to you all if you'd like to see it too, that, you know, Mr. England would come out and, and review the property on behalf of Ozzy and submit a report to the city on its actual structural condition.
When did he contact Mr. England?
April 4th was the date of the, of the email that I was sent. I don't know the exact date. Ozzy reached out. That was just Brent's response.
Okay. And I guess my, my larger concern is that when we passed the resolution earlier this year, we said he had to have something by March 13th. And here we are, a month later, and he's finally getting around to do something with it? Like, how? Is how long do we, do we keep doing this?
Well, you know, he, he did reach out after the deadline and say, oh, I'm in Israel. I'm not well, and so if in fact that was the case, I kind of feel like he inadvertently bought himself another month before he actually got the meter running. I think at this point, he's doing his due diligence and retaining an engineer and the engineers have got him on a schedule. And all of us, I believe, knowing what circumstances are now with services such as that, I think it's probably reasonable to allow him the time, whereas I'm not excited about it. I'd like to see it moving faster.
I think it'd be more reasonable to get another quote and get somebody out there sooner. I mean, he's not the only engineer in the state.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm not playing around with this guy anymore.
He, yeah, he, you know, if we could, if we could reach out to him and maybe say, hey, can you check around? See, maybe he has checked around. And this is the only guy that came.
Six weeks.
Get him and get to him in a timely manner. I don't, I don't know how that went. So.
I just have, per his correspondence with me, he just noted that it was hard for him to find a qualified engineer that could visit the site earlier, but how many he actually reached out to, I mean, before he got Brent.
You know, without subpoenaing his phone records, we don't know. So, with that, I, as much as I don't like it, I think.
But even the date you just gave us is a, a, a month range here or there, you know? I mean, we need a solid date.
Yeah.
This is, this is kind of getting ridiculous, I think.
End of May or first part of June is what, what the engineer says. So, yeah, there's no, there's no definitive. We for sure will have it done by this date in that response.
Well, I'm playing devil's advocate. Would you say then, Josh, that we give him an ultimatum to get out there and, and get somebody out sooner, or do we move forward and, and?
I always think we need to move forward. I mean, the, the resolution we had passed, that was the ultimatum. That was his notice to get something done.
I'm on board with that.
Brad, what do you, do you see any difficulties in if we, okay, let's move forward. We gave him, gave him a date and he's kind of passed on it?
A few times. As a pragmatic consideration, you're not gonna get anything done sooner. Because if he refuses to let us inside to go ahead and do any kind of an asbestos inspection or even to check for friable mold, then I have to go to court. By the time I get him into court, you'll be well past end of May and beginning of June. I'm almost certain of it. And he will, because he'll contest it, and he can do that really easily.
Right, and at that point, what we, what the resolution we just passed almost becomes null and void if we're going to court.
Yep.
So.
So you give him a hard, a hard date? Another hard date?
My opinion's kind of in the middle of you guys. One, I do understand if he was overseas and was sick, that he might have missed the original communications, but I do tend to believe that sometimes we're told things that may not necessarily be the truth, just to buy some more time.
Yes.
And at the end of the day, even a 60-day delay in this is still forward progress. It's better than what we've seen in the last 15 years. So based on the fact that he's probably gonna contest everything we do, I would say we give him the, the time in a reasonable timeframe to have the structural engineer come in and, and do the evaluation and provide us with that report. So maybe the best answer would be, we need a solid date when that structural engineer is going to evaluate that property at the next council meeting. And we could, we could.
I would say that's a reasonable request.
Move this subject to the next council meeting, have it on the agenda and tell him we, we at least want a drop-dead date when that inspector's gonna be there to do the evaluation. And then we can discuss any action we take on it at the next meeting, based on that date we receive.
The engineer having his schedule, his workload in front of him, he can determine whether or not he can get there at the end of May or first of June. He, he can forecast when he's got that opening to get there. So maybe we have him put a hard date down, as you say. Whatever, whatever his schedule allows. That's absolutely when he's gonna be there. That's when we're gonna expect him there. And after that, then we, we play a real hardball.
Yeah, I would, I would tell him, we want a drop-dead date on when that inspection is going to be complete. And we highly encourage that he has it done by the end of April.
I can live with that.
Okay. Thank you. And you're looking for direction and that's what you're after at this point?
Yep.
I think you.
Thank you.
We would just continue then until next meeting and I can bring that back. I know just looking at our calendar as far as normal meetings, our first meeting in June is June 12th. I mean, so we could say, I mean, push it as early as possible. And I'll bring up access to the property for the other considerations too, just to see if he is amenable. Cause that was kind of information that came to the forefront after he and I had made contact with one another. But we can set that as a, we want the report in hand no later than that, if, I mean, as soon as possible, but this is the for sure backstop date of having something by that June 12th meeting.
Yeah, and any, any engineering firm, I mean, that's, that's better than 30 days out. You can get, I'm, I'm, we're not talking a huge property here. It's not a very big structure. So, you know, he might have to pay a little bit of an expedite fee to get him there by then, but I would certainly think that he could make it happen.
Yeah.
I will communicate that back.
Do you need a formal motion to continue this over for the next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to continue this item address for 126 East Third till next council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing for the distressed property at 126 East Third to the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That will be moved to the next meeting. Now we'll move on to new business, and the first item under new business is the Sedgwick EMS contract extension request. Looks like Mr. Lowe's in the audience maybe to speak tonight, but we'll start with Ethan to give us a little, catch us up on where we're at here.
2023 is the last year of the current three-year contract. We asked in that contract to have communication from the city of Sedgwick, whether they intended to renew or move away from the contract by April 1st, so that just, as we're, you know, beginning gearing up on budget work, et cetera, that gives us time to, to adjust, make certain thing, or put certain things into place if needed. You have the letter there in the packet that they sent last Monday, asking basically if the city will consider doing a one-year extension, basically of the current contract at the price that we have this year, which is the 189,000. And you can see their, their reasoning for that one-year extension is they want to continue to conduct their research and compile numbers regarding feasibility of standing up an EMS service within their jurisdiction. I, yeah, we'll gladly turn it over to Andy as far as his, his thoughts. He and I have discussed this a little bit, but.
I'm gonna give input, and like I told Ethan, at the end of the day, I'm gonna do what you guys instruct me to do, and that's how we're going to follow through. My concern with them asking for the one-year extension so they could ramp up. Six years ago, when we were building this and we wanted to do a longer contract, we did the three-year contract so they could revamp their ambulance service and get it going again. At the end of that three years, there was no movement on it. They asked for another, we asked for a five-year contract at that point. They wanted another three to finish getting things put together and ready to go. We went six years at this point. We're still haven't moved forward with the only change of they did price another service. And then after they seen that information, they got ahold of city manager Reimer about the extension. It's just one of those hardball feelings that it's just kind of irritating because the, the bad taste that I had was, six years ago, nobody would touch them. We were the only ones that picked it up. But then we were bad mouthed that we were gouging them in the price. And Ethan and I went in blindly, doing our best guess on pricing because we weren't sure what was going on. And over the last six years, we've been able to track the run volume. We've had shifts. Not only, the biggest one was the fuel last year, but our medications and medical supplies are climbing on us rapidly. And that's even if we can get them. We're having to make changes on drugs constantly. So I can't get a locked price because we're on a roller coaster of what we're buying this month to cover what. We do a lot of number crunching for them that they asked for the last two months. There was a comment that they were upset that I hadn't been down there the last couple of years to give a report. Just so you guys are aware, I had never been asked to come back down to give a report. Each year that I was asked to go down, I went down. I gave them the same state of the city report that I give you guys. I did not avoid giving them information report. I was never asked for it. Great, great citizens, great city to care for. We get a lot of compliments from their citizens, and I do appreciate that. I enjoy visiting with them. I just, I'm not sure what we want to do as far as our budgeting. We, I don't have a problem doing the one-year extension. It just, it kicks some of our plans down the road another 18 months trying to figure out what we're doing with our open position, not knowing what this contract was doing. We never have filled our open position. Doug and I have been covering all the additional calls and chasing the Sedgwick stuff.
What is the reality that someone could get something going in 12 months?
As, as far as the equipment, the truck, getting all the paperwork through the state, Medicare and all that, they could do that fairly easy.
It's taking us, what, two, two years to get an ambulance?
Yeah. Right. They would have to buy something used somewhere. Yeah, they wouldn't pick up a new ambulance by any means. It would have to be used. My concern would be, would they have the staffing? I'll use Newton for an example because they're right now one of the highest paying agencies with a nice benefit package. I'm not bad mouthing us. We get paid well for what we're doing here, but as far as public safety, they're one of the higher ones. They cannot keep their positions filled right now. They've got open positions. They can't keep filled, so I, I have a staffing concern of where they're going to get staffing, but that's, that's all on them. That's not for me to meander and or mingle on, but it's just one of those things I'm looking at.
So if there's no contract, we're not required to go there at all?
No. We would be required to respond to everything outside around the city limits because that's part of the county funding we get, all the rural stuff.
So it's 158,000 a year?
189,000.
189,000. And that is, that is breaking us even right now. We're not.
Yeah.
Overpricing. We're breaking even.
About $23 an hour on call, 24 hours a day. That's pretty much what they're paying you. That.
So if we're breaking even and, and the prices are going up, who's footing that bill? I mean, why should our taxpayer foot the bill for Sedgwick is my thing.
No, you know, the thing is, we, we, we went to a time-specific contract so that we could assess it at the end. We've, you've assessed it at the end, found that we are falling short. We need to increase our prices, and that's the due diligence to our citizens, so if they want an extension, I'd say, let's give them an extension, but at the new rate for one year.
And that's generous.
Yes.
Well, what about going two years?
Well, if we go two years, it just, I think it allows them to, I don't know what they're gonna do, but it.
I would be willing to bet that we'll be back in this discussion in one year or two years. It doesn't matter. Timeframe. We're gonna still have this discussion.
That's true.
Have they made any moves whatsoever as, as attempting to get people trained, reaching out to see if they could even get enough people to run a service in Sedgwick? Has any of that been done at all?
I'm not privy to any of that, no.
Well, here's, here's the golden question. Did you look at their budget for this year, Ethan? Did they have a line item for that? And did you see how much was in it?
Yeah, for 2023, I mean, they anticipated the contract for 2023 now.
No, I'm, I'm talking about to not have the contract.
I know they've made some capital transfers to build, I mean, a capital base for their EMS, how much exactly is in there. I couldn't answer that off the top of my head.
The last time I seen the number, it wasn't even close to what it's gonna be requiring to, to start EMS services back up, so.
The other thing is, we, we, we are continually planning for the future, so, you know, we need to, we need to know.
And what happens if we don't? If, if we decide we're not gonna do a contract with them and they're on their own, what happens anyway? Aren't we, aren't we gonna get called?
Well, likely out of a hu, sense of humanitarianism, we probably make the call anyway, don't we?
Or does Newton pitch in, or do they say, no, they're not going?
How, yeah, how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, how do you do that, knowing here you've got the services and there's somebody in distress there? Well, we don't have a con, well, you, you know, and we've talked about this out of a sense of humanitarianism, you still go.
Yep.
We, dispatch will dispatch Halsted because we're the closest responding agency in the county.
Even Newton? Even fire station number one?
We are .2 miles, I think.
We're actually two miles closer than station three, yes.
We're like two tenths of a mile in station three.
Okay.
So.
So we still have to go anyway?
Well, we'll get dispatch. We wouldn't have to, I mean.
We'd go.
Right.
We'd go.
Yeah, that's what you do.
Yeah.
I wouldn't leave the public and citizens hanging.
No, you wouldn't, and I wouldn't expect you would.
But their own town is leaving them hanging.
Yes.
Yes. That's the point.
That's the point. I, I say we go with one year. I'd say we go hard on the one year and.
At 8% or three years at 6%.
Sounds fair to me.
That sounds good. Yeah, I like that, Josh. I like that.
I mean, that's real, that reality.
That's reality. I mean, how many of us render or go out looking for services that, people don't go into business, and this isn't a business, but we have costs to cover.
We, we've seen it with our own employees here with the city, where we've been through two 7% cost of living increases. So it's only natural that this EMS contract should follow that coal increase as well, and we haven't increased it to the max.
And the extra cost cannot fall on Halsted, so that's ridiculous.
We've said that from Jump Street, that the taxpayers of Halsted should not be subsidizing EMS service to Sedgwick, so it's gotta pay for itself.
Ethan, correct me if I'm wrong. Last year is the only year we increased it, the cap amount that we had. We have never increased it at the max until last year, and that was due to that fuel spike that we had to cover on fuel and some of the medications. I mean, we talked about fuel, but Ethan and I have talked about other items that were costing an increase as well.
Counsel, are we missing anything, an angle here or?
The, the contract is the contract, and what you choose to do at this point in an arm's length transaction is this city's business. And there is no obligation legally. In this state, people have a real hard time grasping because they've become so used to formalized emergency services. There's no requirement the city provided. There's no, you can, you know, take your family member and throw them in the back of the truck. All that's not legal. You know, I mean, you do not have, there is nothing that requires any city to provide the service. There's nothing that requires a county to come in and do anything. I mean, it's just hard for people to understand. And we're caught in between. Fire districts, we can do a district with ambulance services. We're still at a point where we don't have the ability to really do that unless it's all under a fire district. So makes it very difficult to form up and do this other than the types of agreements that exist between the two cities here. But you don't have any other legal obligation, and you've identified the one issue, the moral one. And if dispatch calls you and you say, I don't think so, thanks, but no thanks, there's a problem.
Somebody's having a hard time sleeping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As Andy and I have discussed this, I mean, to Councilor Flay's point, I, we would feel comfortable seeking more like a two-year extent. Cause as Councilor Hobble brought up of the logistics of trying to get something from zero to stood up. I mean, it's like, if we were gonna do this and just to get, keep us off the seesaw that we seem to engage in every three years now, would be, you know, I would be fine with a two-year extension, but this whole research and to me, these numbers I know have been run by previous Sedgwick staff and those have been presented, and I don't think they're gonna get a different answer this time than they have any other time this has been researched. But is looking and saying, you know, we want two years because that helps us determine some of that staffing, but then wanting a firm answer of like, is this, you know, is contracting with us gonna be the way of the future going forward and working that out and/or, you know, if they're gonna bid out not, you know, then we want to see a formal RFP where we know what we're bidding, not like this, where they can contact a company and say, well, also charges us this, can you, you know, can you undercut our current provider?
Well, and if they wanna bid it out, maybe we'll just choose to no-bid it.
Right, and so basically say, hey, we'll look at two years, but we want to know by the end of 2023, because we'll have to make logistical changes. There's no doubt about it, and Andy and I have already begun discussing what that looks like. If Sedgwick comes out, I mean, that changes our service in some regards, and we need time to be able to make that adjustment. And six months is not an ideal timeframe for us to downsize, start cutting back, you know, figuring out what we're gonna do, you know, with the revenue and expense differences that we would naturally see.
Isn't there a community out to the west that we may be servicing also?
They, they've got several in class right now. I think we're a few years down the road before that becomes an issue.
I was concerned that we might be seeing that also in 2023.
We've, we've got a, a few years. It's definitely on my radar. I'm watching.
Okay.
However, they're a lot more communicative as well.
And so I guess that's, we're looking for policy guidance because we can, we can go to them and negotiate at this point as, as staff and bring that back for consideration.
I like Josh's idea.
I do too. I like that.
8% on a one year, and if you wanna do a three-year, we'll go down to 6%.
I like that a lot.
I think it'd be value in offering them two, going after two years though, I mean, if, if we're looking at needing time for staffing issues.
So that sounds like what, seven?
7%, yeah.
Two years of 7%. I like it.
One year, eight, seven, three at six.
You have direction, sir?
You didn't need any formal action on that, did you, Ethan?
I think general consensus at this point will make the counter offer.
So.
There goes.
Are we good on that one then? Counsel, any other questions or comments regarding that? All right, we'll move on to the next item under new business, and that's city sidewalk program update. Know Ethan and I have talked about this before, so go ahead and bring it to the table, Ethan.
Thank you. You had in your packet kind of a draft of a, of a revamp, and then the current sidewalk replacement program the city's had for, since I think 2004, which the, the issues with that, as noted, is the compensation was per lineal foot of sidewalk, and those amounts were set at $6 per lineal foot for downtown sidewalks and $3 per lineal foot of sidewalk replacement. I'm sure any of you that have put in sidewalks or done concrete work know that the lineal foot versus what the square yard cost is doesn't compute, so that, that compensation rate, and just to kind of put it in perspective, with the massive, the biggest project that's ever been done with the sidewalk rebate program, since my time with the city was the Methodist Church, they did about $30,000 worth of sidewalk work, and we gave them $2,300, I think, in rebate. Originally, you know, the, the council, I think, more intended that to be, you know, 50/50 split, something that's covering, you know, materials at least, and maybe the labor. You know, fifty-fifty split, something that's covering, you know, materials at least, and maybe the labor cost was on. Um, but to me, you just can see how many people are utilizing the program that. It, it hasn't been a very successful program, so this was just looking at what some other cities do. Um, obviously, this is just a draft. Um, so this would be, you know, seventy-five percent. Um, on residential property. We didn't really put anything about downtown since we've kind of, based on the. Consensus, um, you know, was that the city was covering Main Street sidewalks. Uh, so we just kind of put this on the residential side, um, tried to, to line that up with what, uh, things we've done with the um. Strategic uh plan, and then also like the safe routes to school of uh where there's actual issues, you know, or we have. Entire lots that don't have sidewalk, but there's sidewalks on each side, uh, those kinds would be given preference over someone just wanting to build a brand new sidewalk. And if they are putting in new sidewalk, we'll obviously look to make sure we're not building, you know, sidewalks to nowhere. Um, on a property, so just wanted to present this to you all, let you have a chance to review it, make suggestions for changes. Um, but I do think from a policy direction, we need to, to up our game, um, if we really want people to address sidewalks.
Have you come up with a number for linial foot for a rebate?
Um.
Cause I've got a number in mind.
We, I didn't put this, I just put a flat seventy-five percent, so you wouldn't run into the problem we have now, which is it's twenty years out of date and just say. We consider priority, and then the city would control cost, basically like we do with the dragon grant program of the council during the budget process, would say. There is eight thousand dollars in that line item, and if we hit that, that's the most sidewalk.
Well.
We're gonna do for rebate.
Most of the cities where I've seen these type of programs, the program was put together to basically provide the concrete. And based on my math, if you're doing a, a four-foot wide sidewalk, four inches thick. Uh, you're looking at about uh twenty-five dollars a linial foot for that sidewalk. That's quite a bit more than the three and six dollars we've been paying.
Well, I think in, in here, it said that one of them would be five feet.
Well, and then, so that number's even low for a five-foot wide sidewalk.
Yeah.
But that's how far apart the numbers are, just to cover the concrete, because concrete turned about a hundred dollars a yard down. So, I didn't, I mean, that, I, that's just a number I wanted to bring forward, but. We can put the program together however you think it'll work best for the city.
Well, this, I say, the only advantage of, of this and why I just chose it for the initial draft was. That it's literally, you know, you just look at the invoice. We do enough concrete work, we should be able to determine if that's a reasonable price, someone's being quoted for concrete, and then just saying, you know. It's seventy-five percent of the project, you're responsible for twenty-five percent. Now again, we can go down to fifty-fifty or. Yeah, I mean, whatever the council would feel is prudent, we just, seventy-five to me i- is the best. You know, is a reasonable incentive, trying to say that this is a priority for the city.
Taking seventy-five percent of the total cost and. But what kind of budget do we have right now if we were to put that, bring a program like this forward?
We've been putting like five thousand a year in, in the line item that we use to pay for that, and if.
But at this higher rate, are we gonna burn through that five thousand a lot faster?
We might, I mean, that's kind of part of it is seeing what we got, I mean, just. Like we did with the dragon grants, I mean, where we originally only put twenty thousand in that program, and then. Based on all the applications we got from downtown businesses, we were like, we need to fund this a lot higher, or we need to go back and say, maybe. Dialing it in a, a little bit better.
As you were reviewing other cities and what they're providing, did you read through any specifications such as, are they requiring? Remesh to be put in these sidewalks when they're going down new, replacing them?
Yeah, I mean, typically, most of the programs read that y- it has to be whatever the city's standard is.
Reinforced concrete.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and then if, uh, like that, if they're allowing the homeowner to do it, the homeowner basically has to. Prove up that they can finish the concrete, you know, to a sufficient level.
Saw that, yes.
Not, not be, you know, kind of like when we allow a homeowner to be their own contractor, they have to. Basically be able to show the building inspector they're capable of doing the work. Um, and so that's why we put in things of like, even though we wouldn't charge for it, then actually pulling a building permit, so we have. Have that kind of information on file. Um. But I say you can run the gamut, I know, let the city of Lawrence, I believe, uh, um, just recently. Put out a survey, and I mean, you get answers of whether because it's in the public right of way and. Public are supposed to access it, you know, that there's feeling that that should always be a city-covered expense, or. No, that should definitely be the property owner, and so picking that seventy-five percent number, I'll be honest, was kind of. Trying to gear it of making it an incentive to a homeowner to try and keep costs down, but whether that's the correct number for Halsted, I don't.
Well, I, I read that, and I thought that, that's attractive. I think we probably have more people taking, um, partaking of, of this program. And uh, I, I, and I looked through your um requirements and pretend contractor kind of stuff. But I thought that, I, I liked it all, yeah.
I think, um, I mean, the other. If you will, the advantage of us having a, a more attractive rebate program is it gives us an opportunity for. For code issues where we have areas of sidewalk that desperately need to say, there is this. Option, because we understand sidewalks are expensive, but we really need you to fix your sidewalk.
Well, the other thing about this is, these dollars are gonna last, provided they're done right, they're reinforced and all. These dollars will last a long time. These dollars will last a long time.
I like it, I think it's a good move. I think we ought to move forward with it.
Try it out and see how it works. Can we make this retroactive?
No, that's a conflict.
I mean, I guess we just ask for feedback on it, I mean, we're, you are free to. If you don't want to see any changes brought back, or if you wanna have two more weeks with it, you can pen action on it. Um, I just didn't put it for formal action, because I wasn't sure what the feedback would be on getting this put into place.
Well, I think, sounded like every.
Give you formal action to, to go ahead with it as presented.
You good? Yeah. Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the recommendations for the city sidewalk uh rejuvenation program as submitted.
Second.
Have the motion in the second for the new city of Halsted sidewalk program. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Good job, Ethan, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-three street sweeping proposal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have a street sweeping proposal from Clean Right, who we've used uh the last few years. Very happy with their service. As note, um, we only have two contractors in our area that we know of that do street sweeping on a contractual basis. Um, just visiting with Pat, some of the, some of the issues we've seen, um, kind of as a cost-saving measure, we went to kind of a general one-time sweep. Uh, sometime after July fourth and before old settlers, um, but obviously that allows for a lot of debris to be in our stormwater system. Um, just from the spring and then from winter treating of roads, uh, so. Speaking and because we don't own our own street sweeper and, and getting into the street sweeping business, I mean, those are very expensive pieces of equipment. Um, we thought, uh, visiting with the contractor, maybe trying to do a early spring and, and fall. And do two sweeps a year might be a, a good thing that maybe would address, and so you can see there that this would be. Basically two full sweeps of the city, uh, the first sweep, uh, as I noted, that is the exact same price they charged us last year for one full sweep. Um, and then the second sweep, which we would schedule, you know, later in the fall, um. Winter to try and get some of that initial uh autumn debris and stuff, and keep that from being on the streets, uh. Would be thirteen-five. This is more than we budgeted for, but I do believe we have more than enough um. Capability to absorb that second street, just to see if this has a positive result for us, um, in terms of it, because. Once a year is just not really cutting it, um, in my opinion, on. Keeping our streets and, and addressing some of the issues and, and trying to keep our stormwater system in good health. Um, so this is just a proposal, we would, at the very least, ask council to approve at least the one sweep at sixteen thousand. Again, we've been very. Very pleased with Clean Right, um, as a contractor, they do a good job. We often get many compliments of how thorough they are going through the city. Um, I don't know, Pat, if you have any thoughts you wanted to share on.
No, I think you covered it.
The street sweeping, but yeah, this would just be basically that second sweep, uh, would be something. Um, that we would absorb in the budget, but there should be enough. Enough room in the budget to handle that without causing us any undue stress in that fund.
I know Pat had his eye on a pretty nice street sweeper, that Kansas Rural Water Shelby. You're right, those things are very expensive, and I still think that this is the best alternative for us currently is to contract this.
We looked at that a while back, and we thought, no, that's too much. Yeah. Anybody have any questions on this? Is, are we good with the two?
You couldn't fund one for thirty thousand dollars a year?
Oh, no.
What do they run?
Did you price that one you were looking at, Pat?
Uh, a couple of years ago, it's two hundred and fifty, that one probably three, three twenty-five.
And it was, um, we looked at a couple of used ones also, didn't we?
Uh.
And I think maintenance was gonna be an issue with them.
Yeah, and that's, that's the problem with used is you're buying somebody else's trouble.
Well, that's the thing, I think that's where we just figured that we were, they were problematic, used one was problematic, and the option was new, and they were just too far out there.
By the time you buy a new street sweeper, hire personnel to run it, and look at all those costs associated with it. Contracting it out probably starts to look at a pretty, like a pretty attractive deal, especially even over time.
So, are we good with the two sweeps?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, uh, with that, I'd make a motion to approve proposal from Clean Right for a street sweeping in twenty twenty-three for an amount not to exceed. Twenty-nine-five.
Second.
Have the motion in the second for the uh twenty twenty-three street sweeping proposal. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign.
Probably be beneficial to, you know, send out a. Uh, update or warning, you know, on our, on our new board out there.
Yeah, well, and we always try to put notifications out, so people that normally park on the street move those vehicles. And our, uh, our warning system, I, I, are we getting a lot of people signed up for that? I mean, I, I get the text messages and stuff too, I mean, that's another good place to send those alerts out.
Yeah.
Honestly, Facebook is probably our best way to reach people.
Yeah, I mean, it gets a lot of traffic. What's the county call that system, Ethan? I forget.
Oh.
Everbridge.
Everbridge, yeah. So if you're not signed up for Everbridge yet, if you sign up for those notifications, then you can receive text messages. When the city is doing something like this, whether it be street sweeping or any other type of emergencies, water main breaks, things like that. So, just come down to City Hall and ask Julie about it, and she'll get you signed up.
Can the city just send out a message on how to s- set that up and people just set it up? I mean, can you make it easier on people?
No, they, they have to go to the website and sign up for what push notifications they want, because it's not just Halsted, it's Harvey County. I think there's thirteen different counties, something like that, that can be signed up for, so if they don't go sign up for the, by themselves. They're not gonna get what is beneficial.
Like multiple outlets, not only Facebook.
Right.
Yeah.
No, we do, yeah.
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 And I, I signed up for Everbridge when it first became available, and I get the red flag warnings and stuff like that right to my phone, and. If you don't acknowledge it on your phone, then it calls you and gives you a pre-recorded message, so. Once, once you're signed up for it, if you miss a notification, you are under a rock somewhere.
You can sign up at HalstedKS.com, it's on the front page of our website.
All right, we got uh two more items left under new business. The next one is uh ordinance number twenty twenty-three AP dash oh-seven A. It's asking for approval to a check to Halsted Floral at the Plaza, and we always call these out publicly since uh Mr. Lanham is a council member, so.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve check number one-two-zero-one-two-two to Halsted Floral at the Plaza for sixty dollars. And approve ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash AP dash seven A.
Second.
Have the motion in the second to approve this check. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, that passes. The next item under new business was added to the agenda and it's consideration for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two. And this basically involves the sale of some land in the uh industrial park to the uh drainage district.
Yeah, I think, Julie, did you give them a copy of?
Oh, I did not.
Oh, Dennis has a copy.
I have the resolution.
It's just a resolution, basically, that um reaffirms that the city is um selling the property and gives the mayor the authority to execute documents. On behalf of the city, uh, closing tentatively on that is set for four o'clock tomorrow. So, um, basically, if we're still okay with the sale, um, we need to give the mayor that authorization, and that resolution does that. So, Brad didn't miss anything.
No, that's it.
So we need a motion to approve that resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero-two, sale of the land to the drainage district. And to um allow a mayor to sign appropriate uh documents.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, and that motion carries, and Julie's gonna go with me so I don't get myself in trouble.
Yeah, you gotta watch it.
Appreciate your confidence. We do have one executive session on the uh agenda this evening, and I would entertain the motion for that now.
Mr. Mayor, I moved that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Exception KSA seven-five-four-three-one-nine B two. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chambers at eight P M.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, we will be moving into executive session. Post same sign, we will be moving into executive session. Back from our executive session, is there any uh action to be taken as a result of? Not hearing from the council, uh suggests we can move on, so the uh next item on our agenda is the report section. And we'll start with governing body comments and I'm gonna start with you tonight, Mister Flavin.
I have nothing to say.
Denise?
I just wanna say that we've really had some really nice weather and where most of us are starting to get back out and walk. Just remember that when you're walking, you're to walk against traffic and not with traffic. And if you're out in the early dawn hours or at dusk or afterwards, remember to wear your um reflective, um something reflective on it so that um you can be seen by people who are driving.
Thank you, George.
Yes, um, I'm getting abused pretty much every time I go into the cafe, they're wanting to know when we're gonna see a date and time on the marquee out here. I'm taking a lot of fire on that, mister.
At least it's not done.
So that's all I have to say.
That was actually what I was gonna say, they're tired of seeing our ugly mugs as well.
Oh, that's not coming down.
Do you have anything else, Josh? How about you, Derek?
Yeah, I went out for a golf cart ride on Sunday and got to see all the patchwork being started in town and it's a good sign that the streets are being treated and uh looking forward to the work being completed as we go along, so, good job.
Yeah, I've seen the same things and, and that, you know, brings up a reminder that uh, and I did get a door knocker on my house for a slurry seal, I think that's gonna happen on Fourth Street. And they were working on Third Street pretty significant today, so just be aware when you receive one of those door knockers, if you normally park on the street, please try to park your vehicle off the street so uh those crews don't have to work around it and that would keep them busy all day and hopefully cost us less money or get more done in the long run. So that's all I have, other than Julie has provided me with a proclamation this evening. This one is for Fair Housing Month proclamation. So it starts, whereas the month of April twenty twenty-three marks the fifty-fifth anniversary of the signing of the National Fair Housing Act, which prohibits discrimination against any person in terms, conditions, or privileges of the sale or rental of a dwelling or in the provision of services or facilities in connection therewith because of race, color, religion, sex, including gender, identity, and sexual orientation, family status, national origin, and disability, and whereas the den- the denial of equal housing opportunity is a serious challenge and must be met and surmounted lest it erode the vital social structure that holds a community to get together. And whereas the need for shelter is an essential human need, and whereas the right to freely choose a place to live is a basic human right, and discrimination in housing is not only against the law, it is contrary to the sense of what Americans should mean to its citizens and to others. And whereas ongoing education, outreach, and monitoring are key to raising awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And whereas only through continued cooperation, commitment, and support of all Kansans can barriers to fair housing be removed. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dennis Travis, have hereunto set my hand and signature, cause the seal of the city of Halsted to be affixed this tenth day of April twenty twenty-three and proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-three as the Fair Housing Month in the city of Halsted. So that's our Fair Housing Month proclamation, I only wish we had more new homes to offer people in town. Now we'll move on to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, uh the formal report was emailed out to you all earlier today, but just some highlights. Uh, one to the, on the marquee, we're waiting on our I T contractor, hopefully no later than the end of this month uh to get all the back networks talking to each other and adequate im- security uh in place with our network uh to let that marquee uh be on our network and accessible to our staff to update, so we are pushing for them to expedite that as much as we can. Uh, big news uh for uh the city, the, we did actually get word back on one of our hazard mitigation grant uh letters of intent uh regarding uh building a storm shelter and restroom facility in Riverside Park. That was a project estimated at about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh does have a twenty-five percent match from the city. So we are working with the contractor and Kansas Department of Emergency Management on uh sending in the formal application for that, but that will hopefully allow us to build um one, a storm shelter that can be utilized if there's ever inclement weather out there, but two, uh we can put ADA bathrooms actually closer to the ball fields, um replace kind of the existing concession stand, um so we'll work with that to make that a kind of multi-purpose use uh building. Um, but it does have to obviously meet all the requirements to serve as a storm shelter as well under that grant, but that was uh good to finally get word back on one of those letters of intent that uh hopefully that will work uh in our favor and we'll be, get that final grant once we turn in the application. Uh, tree removal has been done for the Main Street extension, um and all the debris has been taken to the burn site, so just thank you to Public Works for continuing to work on that massive project and getting that done. Uh, we did have a burn site flare-up last Tuesday, uh that uh did unfortunately catch a portion of the levee on fire. Thanks to our mutual aid partners for uh responding and then our own local fire department uh for getting out there and getting that under control quickly. Uh, the bleachers and the concrete project uh are done at the Little Diamond, uh staff are now looking at other potential upgrades, uh including some backstop improvements as our next step to just continue working on that area. Uh, we did get the HEAL grant application successfully turned in the state in conjunction with uh two oh four Main Streets property owner. We uh have sent out inspection requests again to other potential distressed properties around town and downtown. Uh, so we will be hopefully working, if we get any responses from those, or visiting with the council on next steps we might wanna take on any of those properties. And then the mayor already mentioned and Councilman Lanham, the patching and slurry seal work uh is currently underway. And I can't say it any better, and the mayor did, as far as if you get that notice, please uh remove your car from the street so they can do as complete and thorough job as possible. Uh, Harvey County is continuing their work on Halsted Road, um so hopefully we'll um see them continue and actually do the, the overlay here pretty soon, and then uh they did uh B N S F and Harvey County uh did some work on the Halsted Road crossing and I believe that's uh much improved from where it was um previously, so we were glad to see that work get done. And that is all I have this evening unless there's any other questions.
Questions of uh Ethan's report, council?
To the houses, sorry, I've just let the council know that we are opening bids uh this Thursday for the Cedar Meadows uh Powers and then the Ninth and Walnut projects, so you all hopefully will be looking at those bid tabulations on the twenty-fourth and we can keep those projects moving forward.
Good, good, good.